All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting the Santra Peace Council Order today, Tuesday, May 28th, and it's 7:14 PM with a clerk called the roof commander. Before we get there, we have the public comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have Matthew Clark from Berkeley, Michigan. Welcome, Matthew. Yes, if you can just push the button on the microphone. We have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and the city. I'm here to talk today about the Palestine Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Resolution. I am a member, a longtime member of JDP, which is Jewish Voice for Peace, the largest Jewish Palestine solidarity organization in the world. We stand for freedom and justice for the Palestinian people. And we oppose the horrific genocide going on right now in Gaza. We're an organization, a Jewish organization, that supports the Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement, which is a Palestinian call, Palestinian-led movement, calling upon international civil society to, that includes governments, organizations, all people are conscious, to engage in boycotts and divestments of companies that are complicit with the crimes of Israel. And this movement calls upon boycotting of specifically named companies in an attempt to put pressure on them to comply with international standards of human rights and to put pressure on Israel to comply with international standards of human rights in its treatment of Palestinian people. And the first thing I want to do is, I want to thank the City Council. I want to thank the city administration, the manager, and the city attorney for being very receptive to the work that we've been doing from the very beginning. Bill Meyer, I want to thank him as well, as in the audience, has helped to make this resolution possible and to put it on the agenda today. The city of Hamtramck was one of the first cities to pass a resolution in support of the ceasefire in Gaza, which is amazing and extremely appreciated. The city of Hamtramck became the first city in the U.S. to pass a Move Your Money Resolution, pledging or demanding that the federal government move funds from war to the cities and to people who need it away from overseas wars. We hope tonight that Hamtramck will become the first city in the country to pass a BDS resolution in support of the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement. There are two other cities in the country that have made efforts and passed divestment resolutions that apply to select companies that are targets of the BDS movement. But Hamtramck would be the first city in the country to pledge to stop investment and procurement with all companies that are targeted by the boycott, divestment movement. That includes companies, for example, like Hewlett Packard, Siemens, that German engineering company, companies that often do business with municipalities. It'd be very easy for the city to pledge to work with companies that simply comply with standards of human rights. And I also want to make clear, of course, because this tends to come up, that supporting Palestine and the Palestinian people right now is, of course, not anti-Semitic. I'm a Jewish person, and I stand with the Palestinian people against the genocide going on. I oppose genocide because I'm Jewish, because my people have suffered the Holocaust and horrific genocide. For that reason, I say never again to anybody, especially for the Palestinian people.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I have Mr. Bill Meyer.
Okay. Well, first, I'd like to welcome our new chief of police. I think it's his first council meeting. Welcome. So glad to have you here. And out of respect, I'm keeping my hat on for my Palestinians. So I'm Bill Meyer, Chair of the One Hamtramck, and also Chair of Michigan Peace Council and former member and founder of the Detroit Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace. Dear Council and Mayor, thanks for all your sometimes tedious work that you do for the city, important, necessary work, keeping our city running and keeping the residents happy. Thank you so much for that. Tonight, there's a special resolution dealing with a world issue that affects us more directly than most people know. Watching a genocide happen before our very eyes while knowing our tax dollars that should be used for us to help pay our issues is instead being used to help pay for massacres. It's unconscionable. This weekend alone, Israel used U.S. bombs to kill 45 people in a refugee camp, adding to the over 36,000 people killed and millions more injured and displaced. Supporting wars that kill people and destroy nations and countries has never been voted on by the people of this country. I want to thank our mayor and our city manager for putting this important resolution on the agenda and hope that you all vote for it and spread this message to the world that we need to support and are actively working to bring peace and justice to the Palestinian people and to the entire Middle East, who are all victims of this almost century-long, inhumane, illegal occupation of Palestine. This must end, and it will end soon. The world is waking up and catching on to what's going on. This past weekend, there was an incredible People's Conference for Palestine. In Detroit, over 3,500 dedicated activists attended. There were powerful suggestions offered on how to help Palestinians and bring them into this crisis in the Middle East. There's been a long been a call to endorse the Palestinian people's nonviolent BDS campaign, which was developed back in 2006. It's a method which has been used and proven to be one of the most effective means of ending the brutal racist apartheid regime in South Africa back in the 1980s. Hamtramck is, can I get an extra minute? Hamtramck has been in the vanguard of opposing injustices and wars around the world by being one of the first cities to vote for a ceasefire in Gaza, the first city to pass the Move Your Money Resolution, the first city to name a major street after Palestine, and now the opportunity to be the first American city to pass a resolution that would lead the way for others to join enforcing Israel's stop its brutal settler colonial apartheid project in Palestine, which is against all international law. Stopping the war in Gaza is an important and immediate need. And the call for Palestinian people to boycott, divest, and sanction Israel for its crimes against humanity is also critical. Israel has made every attempt to call any opponent of Zionism or the government of Israel anti-Semitic and has always feared that the BDS movement would hurt their oppressive regime more than where it hurts most, and that's in the pocketbook. So I'm asking you to vote for the item 2024-51, which is on the New Business, calls for supporting the BDS campaign. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Mark Kory from Memphis.
Good evening. Mark Kory appearing on Resolution 2024-51 to give comments. We realize and recognize that our taxpayer dollars have funded the ongoing assault to human rights of the Palestinian people. No longer in our name will these injustices be continued against Palestinian children, women, and innocent people and murderers. What concerns me over the last week, that 36 elderly children burned to death, and the U.N. workers in their warehouses hear them screaming. They couldn't help them. They died. They screamed for their parents, screamed, they died. They couldn't save them. This has been going on for many years, the first defat in 1987. I was in law school, 30, almost 35, 36 years ago, when we had the first defat, they started throwing rocks at Israeli soldiers to fight killings that were unjustified by the Israeli Defense Forces. This has gone on too long. What we are seeing now is a disclosure of wholesale disregard of human rights that should not be compromised. Two cities in the United States, Hayward and Richmond, California, have already passed BDS-related resolutions. In fact, the last was a few weeks ago in Richmond. We need to be the third. We need to be on the right side of history, not the wrong side. We need to assist the people in promoting justice for the Palestinian people and prevent their ongoing murders. This needs to stop. This needs to end, and we need to be the third city. If we do it, I can guarantee you one thing. This will make national news within a few days, worldwide news, because the first two cities did do so. So I urge you as Muslims, as Arabs, as Bengalis, to help the Palestinian people in their time of need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Resolution 2024-51, declare support of the Palestinian Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you.
All right, discussion.
So, I think, thank you, you and city manager, to bring down this resolution. All the gentleman there supporting the cause of what happened in the world right now. People, every angle of the world, they're hating the genocide that Israel is doing, and we cannot support them anymore. You know, we, every angle, whatever we can, we need to support Palestinians to, you know, help them out, help them out. And this is clearly, you need to boycott to using their products. We cannot have our taxpayer money to use to kill people.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hassan.
I'd like to thank the organization and the people in Moro Bar, is the human who tried to brought this resolution introduced to us. Thank you. Second, as a human, I'm supporting this resolution, not for, not as a Bengali or as a Muslim, no, as a human. As American, what we doing? We are supporting the terrorist people to kill innocent kids. That's why I'm calling them terrorists. The definition terrorist is right there. And we are, as an American administration, we are supporting them to kill the kids, innocent people. And one cannot let the medicine, anything, any food, water, to go that specific area. So we, as an American administration, always been talking about the terrorism, and the other hand, we are supporting the terrorism. The shame for our whole administration. The thing, it will be end, no question about it. It will be end soon, or it will be end when no Israeli will exist in the world to kill the innocent people. Most of the Israelis will be the site of the Palestinians, and they will fight each other to destroy some of the terrorist Israelis. So as Americans, we have to be, think from now, what we doing? Again and again, that we all American, as the country of immigrant, even the President Joe Biden, your generation came from somewhere else. In that case, we are same power in USA. And if you know the math, you know the math, the birth ratio, you think about it, after 50 years, who is going to control the United States? If you're not getting educated enough from today, I will make you educated after 50 years and what you need to do in the United States. Think about it, we kill millions innocent people in Iraq. We not found one ounce any chemical in the Iraq. We destroyed it, and we are sending billions of billions of dollar to rebuild it. First question, why you kill all of the innocent people? Same thing you do in the Palestine. Stay away from that kind of situation and stop it as soon as possible. And not, you gonna learn, you gonna learn very soon, hard way, not the easy way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad the city manager to bring this resolution in this area and that. We are making historical decision, hopefully, next few minutes. I thank you to all the students, Columbia University in California and all over the United States and all over the world, who are protesting Israeli and supporting the Palestinian people. They try to stop the genocide. They pressurize the whole community, our students, our teachers, and our government, who serve the whole country, nation in DC. They are very degenerate people. They are not coming at anybody's side. They know what's going on in the rest of the world. They know what we are doing as the American government. We are taking our citizens' tax money and sending to Israel, and those money using to killing the innocent people, especially kids and women. And this is fully genocide. We cannot go both, we have to stop this. We had opportunity to stop this, bring the table. I hope Joe Biden, he can learn this. He has to learn a long time ago, but he has to learn again and again to stop those things, to have tremendous pressure to, one of our, whole world to know the butcher. Israeli Prime Minister, stop him to killing the genocide and stop the genocide. I hope we will pass this resolution, and we'll do everything possible to make Palestinians freedom and free from the Israeli genocide. I hope everybody, rest of the community, rest of the country, all the cities, and local government, state government, and federal government, they woke up and help the whole community and help Palestinian people to stop the genocide. Thank you very much to listen to me and give me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more? So, thank you all, and thanks to the team that, well, the team who worked on this resolution to bring it. We had to edit it and modify it to be as clear and legal as possible, after consulting our attorney and other attorneys as well. So, thank you so much for working hard to support the Palestinian people. Apparently, most of the American people are against the war. But our government, of course, does not listen to the concern of the people. It seems like we are ruled by a minority in this country, and that's a problem. The voice of the people is not being heard. We elect people, but those people then get supported by some special interest group, and they don't express the opinion and the concern of the people. They rather work for the special interest groups, and that's why I said we are ruled by minority in this country. The American people had no say when it comes to policymaking. And so, after eight months or more of this war, and I call it global war on Gaza, which is very unethical, the global war, all the countries, including the neighboring countries, are violent to support the Israelis and to, you know, put a siege around Gaza. It's only the soil of this land that fights with the people. They are underground, and that's what keeps them alive. And so, why do they sacrifice so much? Because they believe this is their land, and they will die. They'll see their kids dying, but they will never give up on their cause. They are fighting for a good cause, and some people call them terrorists, which doesn't make no sense. We don't understand, we don't, we have experts on so many international issues, but they don't report the correct information to the policymakers in this country. And that's why, after eight months, the Israelis have not accomplished even one single goal of this war. They haven't bring back the hostages. They keep killing them, in fact. They lost more prisoners last week to, more Israeli soldiers were captured, and that's, and more rockets are being fired from Gaza to Tel Aviv, the capital of Israel, after eight months. So I think the only legal or ethical, the only ethical exit for the Israelis is to declare defeat and give up and accept the exchange of prisoners and leave the people, you know, live in their land. That's, if they are, if they want to withdraw with some, a little bit of moral, you know, defeat, and they can, they can wipe out Gaza, but still, they have lost the war ethically, morally, and on the ground as well, but they still insist that they will continue, kill more innocent people, accomplish zero of their goals, which is very unethical, I keep calling it. So, thank you again for bringing this resolution, for discussing it, and I fully support it, and we can move and vote on this resolution.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-51 approved.
Thank you. So we move back to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Kory, Kory, I heard you say, is it Kori or Kory?
Kori.
Kory?
Yours Faraj.
It's Faraj.
Just want to say thank you for everybody for today. It was a good day for everybody. I can thank the people I met, Matt Clark, who actually did a lot of work in drafting this, helped out, Bill Meyer, who was a lot of their force in doing this for Michigan Peace Council. There was also, today we have Dr. Jabour, who I, I remember personally, I know him as a representative in the community, though. It's the first time I've met him in person. I didn't know he was Palestinian, just because I saw him today. But he should, he be speaking here today, but it was a good night to have this, this particular. I am passionate, I want to get a signed copy, signed by the clerk, so we can, I can send out to everybody, because what we accomplished here, I think, is very important, and it'll probably be big national news in a very short period. So, just again, for all of you who voted for us, thank you very much for coming up and showing, for supporting us, because I had a lot of doubts this was going to pass. Because the problems we had in our, we're trying to get this passed for like last 15 years. It hasn't gone through, so I figured it's going to be fought tooth and nail, but there was no opposition, so it was really a good day today. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer, do you want to wait a minute?
Yeah, I'll come up. I think so. So obviously, I want to thank everybody for their unanimous vote and support of this, and also our city manager, who helped put this on the agenda, and everybody else who supports it. This is so nice that this historic event took place on the first day that our new chief of police came here from New York. I'm going to give my time, I'm not going to say anymore. I want to give my time to two distinguished Palestinian guests who are here, who cannot make it in time to speak before the early public comments. Hassan Nuwash is a well-known Palestinian activist in the community. He had Palestine office for many years. Everybody knows Hassan Nuwash. And after him, we have the amazing Dr. Nadal Jabour, who founded the Doctors Against Genocide, and he's been speaking at many rallies. These two people are very important people in the Palestinian community. And I'm so glad they came to talk to you, and thank you. So I'll give my time to Hassan Nuwash.
Thank you.
Welcome, Hassan.
Thank you. Greetings, much appreciation, heartily appreciation to the mayor and the esteemed council for having you passed, passed this historic resolution. You are not in the minority. 143 nations in the U.N. recognized the need for Palestine to be an equal member of the United Nations. Now, it is still an observing member. And only Israel and the United States are the ones that have been opposed to this. So, and the entire world now is on the side of Palestinians, so you are again in the cusp of leadership of where things have to be, given the genocide that our people are facing in Palestine, not only in Gaza, the most severe in the Gaza Strip, but also in the rest of Palestine, in Nablus, Jenin, Jerusalem, Hebrew, etc. So thus, not only I appreciate you and your leadership, but you are going to be the model city for which to be followed by other cities that are still hesitant to be supportive of Palestinians. We have gone through the question of ceasefire resolutions in cities. Hamtramck was in the leadership as well, and a lot of other cities followed. It just came through last weekend. I hope I'm not going over, over time, I will end right now.
You have one minute left.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The, I just attended, participated in 3,000 registrant conference of youth, Palestinian youth conference in Coburg, and it used to be Coburg Hall. And if the energy was unbelievable, it's just like, you know, it actually trumps the entire, the entire expectations by Ben Gurion, the person who established Israel, that people, old people will die and young people will forget. Guess what? 3,000 people with all kinds of energy, unbelievable resolving to continue the fight for Palestinian freedom and return. Thank you very much again for your leadership.
Thank you. Dr. Nadal Jabour.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be here. Do you hear me good?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Nadal Jabour. I'm a co-founder of the organization Doctors Against Genocide. I'm a Palestinian, and as a Palestinian, we want to thank you from the deepest of our souls to the mayor of the city of Hamtramck, Mr. Amir Galib, and to the dignified city council members for being the third city in the nation to pass a divestment resolution against the genocidal criminal regime of Israel. As a doctor, I want to thank you too for doing all you can to protect humanity and to protect human lives. As an American, I want to thank you for trying your best and taking the lead on helping America being on the right side of history, despite the intentional criminal intent of President Joseph Biden, Secretary of State Antony Blinken, and Lloyd Austin. Our organization, we are the medical experts on genocide. We think that Israel has been committing genocide against the Palestinian people for the last century. I consider myself to be a genocide survivor. This genocide has always been supported by the West and by the United States. Israel enjoyed the impunity for this genocide for the last century, and that's why they keep doing it. And as long as they are held accountable, they will continue to do so. Unfortunately, the United States is not just complicit and aiding and abetting the genocide. At this point, we think war criminal Joseph Biden, war criminal Antony Blinken, war criminal Lloyd Austin are full partners in this genocide. At Doctors Against the Genocide, we call on the International Criminal Court to issue an immediate arrest warrant against President, war criminal Joseph Biden, Antony Blinken, and Lloyd Austin for committing war crimes, along with war criminals Netanyahu, Bing, Veer, Gallant, and Smotrich. These people are a danger to humanity. They are war criminals on the loose. They need to be arrested effective immediately to protect the lives of children and humanity. We hope the ICC hears our call. The children and the humanity of the world is at risk as long as these war criminals are on the loose. We think Joseph Biden deserves his legacy to go down history as a war criminal along the names of Hitler, Stalin, Volpa.
Do you want to ask the mayor for an extra minute?
One moment.
Thank you.
So, war criminal Joseph Biden, you deserve this legacy. You should not be going for a reduction. You should be at the head being tried for genocide and for war crimes. Thank you, Hamtramck, for trying to make America great for the first time, because America has never been great. It committed genocide against the natives, it enslaved the blacks, and it is you guys who are trying to make it great for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, the public comment. Mr. Mayor, this is how the public comment.